On September thirteenth. Good evening, and on behalf of the City of Independence, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for this evening. For those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the Chair. Keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with the previous comments, simply indicate your agreement and move on. First, before we begin, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, if there's anybody who would like to speak tonight, would you please stand?
Madam Chair, before we do that, can you please ask staff to call the roll, please?
Yes. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Michelle?
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Chair McLean?
Here. Thank you. Okay. If there's anyone here who would like to speak tonight, would you please stand, raise your right hand? So I can swear you in? Okay. Do you solemnly swear to tell the true old truth before this commission? If so, please answer "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Has anybody have, everyone had a chance to read the minutes? They were long.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Consent agenda minutes have been approved. Thank you all. Okay. First thing on our agenda tonight is case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash fifteen, rezoning of thirteen twenty-two East US twenty-four Highway, request by Jeff Lovelace. Staff, will you give us report, please?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say that we're going to do a joint presentation with one hundred fifteen and one hundred seventeen because they're right next to each other and they started actually, actually started out as one case and were bifurcated later.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Lovelace says on behalf of the property owner seeks to rezone these four lots on US twenty-four Highway to either single-family residential or C-two general commercial. This site is on the north side of twenty-four Highway, just west of Kiger, as you can see. This is the property of question. There's actually, it's one property right now, but they're in the process of dividing it into three lots. So we've got thirteen oh eight there on the lower left and goes over to three twenty, thirteen twenty-two there on the right. Right now, this, as you can see from the surrounding zoning, this, the southern two-hundred feet of this property is on the C-two. It's been zoned that way since nineteen sixty-five at least. You know, it's part of the city's strip zoning, strip commercial zoning along its, most of its corridors. You've heard that several times in the past. Across the street, it is also the same situation. There are single-family residential homes to the north and also single-family zoning that goes with that. This is the, basically the plat that, that Mr. Lovelace has done that shows the properties and the three proposed properties. Going east to west, we've got the thirteen oh eight on its own, a little lot. It is a small commercial building. As you can see from the little square there on the lower left, it is a pretty small little building. The northern, about sixty feet of that property is owned residential and they're seeking to rezone that to commercial, C-two. Now, the middle lot, there's actually three buildings on that. There, the front building is a residential structure that is used as a parsonage for the minister that actually gives, provides services for the church, which is the square building that's to the north east of that. And then just immediately to the left of that is a storage building, metal storage building. And then directly behind that is a little storage building. This also seeks to be rezoned from the northern two-hundred feet, excuse me, the northern sixty feet or so from R-six to C-two. Okay, the eastern part, which is the thirteen twenty-two, actually contains a single-family home. It's been there for, who knows, probably in the fifties, I don't know. In contrast to these other parcels, this one, they want to rezone the front part to residential because the back part is already zoned residential. On this particular lot, there's an older house, a swimming pool directly behind it, and then a garage sort of to the northwest. Actually, you can kind of see that on the, on the aerial photograph there. Like I said earlier, this, the northern, well, the southern two-hundred feet of the property's been zoned some form of commercial since at least nineteen sixty-five. Proposed thirteen twenty-two is, has a house, wood-framed house, freestanding garage, swimming pools. The other two lots contain commercial buildings of types, a couple sizes, and a residential building on the middle lot. And then the thirteen oh eight lot, which is the far western one, is limited to a small commercial building. I think it was formerly a barber shop and it also has a small parking lot there. There are not really any provisions in the city's strategic plan for rezoning alignment as such as proposed by the applicant. The comprehensive plan, proposed zoning of thirteen twenty-two property is consistent with a recommended residential neighborhood land use designation as outlined by the plan. While only a minor revision, the C-two proposal could be considered consistent with the principle of fostering redevelopment opportunities within the city to revitalize used or underused property. It also meets the policies to encourage redevelopment or adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized buildings and sites. As you could expect, R-six is basically zoning for single-family homes with some parks and schools, churches. Single, C-two is a pretty much the biggest land use zoning district in the city. It allows gas stations, hospitals, taverns, drive-ins, auto repairs, all that sort of thing. Okay, this is the comprehensive plan. Again, it shows this area as being all immediate low residential neighborhoods, both sides of the street here. Okay, as far as the environmental situation, there are no reports of this property experiencing any environmental degradation. There is a significant area of green area behind the buildings, not significant, but there is area about, which I'm sure sorts out any issues on the environmental side. It's not within a floodplain or a stream buffer. It's pretty high on the hill, actually. There's no historic or archa- archaeological sites here. All utilities are present and operational. As far as the CIP investments, MoDOT has plans to modify their driveway approaches along US twenty-four Highway, reducing the number and in some cases adjusting their alignment. The driveways for the commercial properties with the, commercial sites with the, which are the three western properties will be reduced from three to two and realigned. The residential property, which is the thirteen twenty-two, will retain its narrower residential driveway approach. They're also adding a five-foot sidewalk on the north side of the highway and a ten-foot trail on the south side. It's part of Missouri MoDOT's US twenty-four Highway Safety Improvement Project. This shows the area, the two dark lines that go up are the, the subject property. You can see there's two wider commercial driveways there on the left that takes the place of three that are out there now. And the smaller driveway that's just to the right is the residential approach for a residential driveway. This kind of shows it again in relationship to the site. You can see the small residential driveway there on the right and then the two commercial driveways, which will take place of the three that are out there. And you can sort of see the sidewalk there on the south and then the trail on the, on the north, excuse me, the sidewalk on the north and the trail on the south. This is the small commercial building at thirteen oh eight. It's like I said, I think it was a barber shop at one time. This is the parsonage, I guess you'd call it, where the minister lives that, that gives sermons in the church back in the background. This is the church building and there's the metal storage building next to it. Now, we're at the back of, right behind the church area, right behind the church and then the other metal building, and this is the residential property to the north. You can see there's a lot of green area out there in the, behind these buildings to the residential property, that, that house there. This is the actual house at thirteen twenty-two where people presently lived, I assume lived there for a number of years. This is the car lot that's immediately east of thirteen twenty-two. Okay, here we're looking northeast up US twenty-four Highway. Properties there on the left. These are three commercial properties across the street from the site, vacant commercial site here, a little convenience store, and a property that was actually zoned to C-three about five months ago, four or five months ago. And here we're looking west down at twenty-four Highway. And then this is the little commercial building that is next to where the barber shop used to be. Staff does recommend approval of both these applications, but they must be voted on separately.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we bring the applicant up?
I've got a question. We're rezoning the one that has got the church and the parsonage on it to C-two, correct?
We're only rezoning the back sixty feet of that lot.
It is already C-two otherwise?
Yeah. As you can see from this, the gray areas are what we're rezoning. On the back of the main, the commercial sites, only the sixty feet from the back is to C-two. And then on the right, the gray area is the, the front part is going from C-two to R-six.
So church and residential was not listed in the, the C-two allowable?
Yeah, churches are allowed in all districts.
Churches are. The home associated with the church is just considered an accessory use of the church?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's my only question.
Any other questions? Will the applicant come forward, please? Go ahead and come forward. State your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Lovelace, nine two nine Southeast Third Street, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Is your microphone on?
Number two.
There we go.
Did you get all that?
Good call.
Okay, I'd just add that we're in agreement with the staff.
Mr. Lovelace, can you restate your name and address?
Sure. Jeff Lovelace, nine two nine Southeast Third Street, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you.
So, like I said, I would just say that we are in agreement with this, of course, with the staff recommendations and if you have any questions, at all, I'll be happy to answer them.
So you feel like this will make it easier to sell the property?
Yeah, and that's what they were trying to, they contacted me just to do the minor plat. And from what I gather, they've had, they could have sold the old barber shop and the house on the right-hand side, the east side, a couple different times, but with the property all being one, they, they just having a hard time selling it, you know? So, so I told them, well, let's split it up into three. And then that process is when we discovered the zoning, the two different zonings on the property. The property's been in this family's name, I think, over a hundred years. And there's been a death recently and the survivors are wanting to, you know, part their ways with the property, but they're having a hard time doing it. They've been trying to sell this thing for about two years. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Well, thank you. Hopefully this will make it easier and the sidewalks.
I think it will.
And the trails.
Yeah.
I'm excited about that. Any questions? You're done.
Okay, thank you.
Easy, thank you.
Yeah, I'm opposed.
All right, I'm going to close the, oh, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, do you have any?
I got a question from staff again. So basically, are they going to replat it then, or is it all?
Yeah, this is actually going through the minor subdivision process right now. That's it done at a staff level.
Okay.
So we're just kind of waiting just to get through and we'll finish the final minor subdivision plat.
Okay.
Okay. There's no more questions? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, if, if I, I could, for what it's worth, it should be very rare that we would ever have a parcel that would have two different zonings on it. In fact, I would recommend to staff that if we are aware of other of these, and I think there are many actually, as we've seen in the last at least year that I have been covering these, that we should be identifying these and maybe even doing a city-initiated rezoning, reaching out to the applicants to clean these things up. Because again, it should be very rare, so this is a good rezoning in my personal opinion, so.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Can we do that?
He's got nothing else to do.
Yeah, just put it on your list to do.
Hey, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve case twenty-two dash zero one hundred dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash fifteen, rezoning of thirteen twenty-two East US twenty-four Highway, has been approved. Next, case number twenty-two one hundred dash seventeen, which we've already heard about. Commissioners, any questions or entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve case twenty-two dash one hundred dash seventeen.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Thank you. Then we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash seventeen, rezoning thirteen zero eight, thirteen ten, and thirteen twelve East twenty-four Highway, has been approved. Next case, number twenty-two dash one hundred dash sixteen, rezoning of twenty-six thirty-one South Lobes Cemetery Cemetery Road.
Madam Chair, I will begin the staff report right now. The applicant is not here yet. He's on his way, so hopefully he will be here by the time I complete my presentation, so.
Okay. It's been that kind of night.
Okay. This is case twenty-two one hundred sixteen, a property that actually abuts South M-seven Highway, but is addressed off of twenty-six thirty-one South Lobes Cemetery Road via a cross access to another property. So as you can see from the vicinity map, it's, it's between Lobes Cemetery, or I guess it's Lobes Cemetery.
Lobes.
Yes, Lobes Cemetery Road and M-seven Highway just north of Strode Road, a couple of blocks. So that applicant wants a rezoned property from, the property is currently RA Residential Agriculture and R-four PUD, single-family residential low-density planned unit development to all RA Residential Agriculture. Former zoning, the three parcel, twenty-seven acre property was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy-five. In two thousand and seven, the middle and southern parcels were rezoned to R-one APUD as part of an earlier, part of the planned Acadia Development. With the adoption of the UDO in two thousand and nine, the existing zoning nomenclature was changed so that District A-one Agricultural became RA Residential Agriculture. Of course, R-one B PUD became R-four PUD, single-family low-density planned unit development. So, before I go over the property information, we'll look at the zoning map real quickly so you can see what I'm talking about. So this property is currently three parcels. There's the big one and the little strip and then the more southern one. And the R-four part is, is the, the yellowish, I guess it's tan on this color at the bottom. And the RA, as they exist right now, is the northern portion. So the properties, those three parcels that you saw, will be replatted via the minor subdivision process into three new residential lots. The two smaller lots will be accessed from M-seven Highway and then there'll be twenty acre remaining lot that will be continued to be accessed, actually, that should say continue, be accessed from Lobes Cemetery, oh, Lobes Cemetery Road. I did it again. The southwestern corner of the parcel near Lobes Cemetery Road was recently split away and recorded without benefit of replating. The replating, this replating will consolidate the existing improvements on the larger lot and leave the two undeveloped lots for friends and family adjacent to M-seven Highway. Properties, basically, it's an open field, most of it along M-seven and along the southern parts. And then there's some large lawn areas around the, the house that's, that's toward the rear of the property, surrounded by woods. However, the, like I said, the property's mostly wooded and that back portion is what has the new home and the existing accessory building. To the west and northwest of the properties are just more wooded areas like the applicant's. Undeveloped field lies to either side of Seven Highway right-of-way. South of the property along Seven Highway is more wooded area. And of course, the area besides fields is dominated by large residential uses scattered, particularly along Lobes Cemetery Road and a few to the south along the M-seven Highway right-of-way corridor. Across the road, going into Blue Springs, is the Kansas City Dumpster Company. So the reason for the rezoning request is that the boundary existing between the existing middle and southern parcels is also a zoning boundary. And so a new-platted subdivision will require changing of the zoning boundaries. And, and by rezoning it to all to RA, that, that's the most simple way of doing that. And then RA would be a classification that would suffice for both the, the large rural lot, the twenty acre, as well as the three acre large estate size residential lots along Seven Highway. So, so the pro, the analysis is that the project is consistent with the strategic plan and also with the comprehensive plans, guiding principles for the community. Zoning, of course, RA allows for numerous single-family uses as well as daycare, churches, schools, cemeteries, and of course agricultural uses in home gardens. The building permit, the applicant applied for a building permit in April for the new residence that's currently being constructed on the rear portion there by the existing accessory building. Replating and rezoning of the part, the three parcels will not create any new legal nonconformities and in fact will eliminate one setback, side setback issue. There are no obvious historic or archaeological sites that have been noted on the property. As far as public utilities, water and electrical services are available from, to these lots from the rights of way and nearby easements. And of course, all three lots would be on septic. And the two smaller ones have the minimum three acres to make that possible. Stormwater and stream buffer issues. The properties do not set any, in any kind of floodplain. Additionally, it's not located within an identified stream buffer area either. There are no streams on the properties. Development of the lots for rural residences will result in very little land disturbance and thus very little runoff. The area has no identified CIP investments. Driveways, the two new three acre lots, of course, will have driveways right off the M-seven Highway right-of-way. And their driveways will need to be paved, given that those lots are under five acres in area. The larger remaining lot has, of course, two existing gravel driveways, one coming across the southern part of the property from M-seven and of course the one coming through the access easement off of Lobes Cemetery Road from which the property is Landscaping, of course, administratively, we will review plot plans and make sure that the required plantings are provided and sodded for the area. Again, this shows the comprehensive plan, which is residential. And of course, residential agriculture is a residentially zoned district. This is an aerial of that property, so you can see the open areas up front by Seven Highway and then the house and the, the accessory building there on the south. And then, of course, winding down southwest is the driveway going to Lobes Cemetery Road. So, this is a plot plan for the house, the new house that's being constructed. And then this is the minor subdivision as proposed. You can see lot two and three there along Seven Highway and the larger remainder of the lot being lot one that is retained by the existing homeowner. So here's looking toward the property, into the property, looking northwest. So here's, uh, looking toward the property, into the property, looking northwest. This is across the street or across Seven Highway, looking to the northeast. And then this is looking south down Seven Highway. And then this is looking across the property. And across the property again. And this is from that south driveway off of Seven Highway. And this is across the street from that driveway. And then on, looking on to the south down Seven. And turning around, looking back into the property again from the vantage point of that driveway. And then looking down that driveway to the west. And then looking back across, back to the northwest across the, the open property. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning for twenty-six thirty-one South Lob Cemetery Road and ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at the aerial photo. Is there, there's three houses on there already, right?
Um.
I'm just trying to figure out the plot plan or the whatever you got. Are we voting on the breakup or you guys already decided all that?
That one up by the road is gone.
That, that white, little white thing up there by the road is not there?
Yeah, that is no longer there.
Okay. So basically, you got the two houses at the back of the lot then, correct?
Well, no, that, that's an accessory building on the south.
Oh, a house and a barn. Barn bigger than a house. Okay. Okay, well, I'm trying to figure out the, the drawing then that you guys got here. I mean, this road that goes into Lot Two, what is that? I'm guessing I'm not quite understanding that. Road that goes into Lot Two on your drawing on the subdivision, minor subdivision drawing.
Okay, the road.
I mean, that's what it looks like, but I don't know exactly what it means. It's hard, are too small to look at. Yeah, right there. You got something that jots into Lot Two, Lot Three, sorry, Lot Three. And I don't know what that is. Is that a road or?
Oh, up to the north. Yeah, I, I think that's, is that an easement?
Is that an easement?
There's two utility easements.
Okay, is that what that is, an easement?
Yeah, that's an easement.
Okay. And then, but then you got that big wide easement that's on, that when I see the aerial photo, that's, that's easement just for the house and the driveway or to the barn, correct?
Yeah, where they're running along the south.
Yeah, running on the south. Yeah, between two lots, I'm guessing.
Hmm, I can't see.
There's this gap exists between two, three, Lot Two, a gap.
Oh, okay, yeah, there's a gap there. So that's Lot One, that's between Lot Two and Lot Three.
Yeah.
So one always, goes all the way to the road.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's what they did. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that way they have access to the road all the way around. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come up? And I will swear you in.
Sure.
I'm assuming you're Mr. Perrin. If you'll raise your right hand and swear to tell the whole truth before this commission, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
While you're up here, if you'll state your name and your address and tell us anything you'd like us to know.
Okay. My name is Kevin Perrin. I represent, um, closer to the mic. Oh, do not bend. Sorry. I represent Red Brick Building Company. I'm the contractor for Jim and Sherry Bedsworth. We are going through the process with Brian to apply for the rezoning. The Bedsworths purchased this property earlier in the year and came across some boundary issues or where the previous owner, we had driveways on the neighbor's property. So to correct those issues, they actually purchased five acres to the south of the original twenty or twenty-two that they bought. And in the process of doing a minor subdivision plat, Brian pointed out that you can't replat anything if we have different zones for one lot. So that's the reason we're trying to get it all uniform as RA, is that correct? To just clean things up. This is also kind of presented, the property is now suitable for two additional single-family homes, as in lots, now we have three lots instead of just the one large lot. So that was the main purpose of the application.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, any questions? Well, that was easy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient with my arrival.
Brian talked really slow for you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any comments or concerns and/or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve Case two-two dash one hundred dash one six rezoning of two-six-three-one South Lob Cemetery Road from RA and R4 to RA.
Thank you. Your second?
Second.
We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash sixteen rezoning of twenty-six thirty-one South Lob Cemetery Road is approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Freezing time.
Okay, other business? I know we're gonna have a training.
Madam Chair, do we need to make a motion that the staff digs into checking out what needs to be rezoned for all the ones that are half-zoned, commercial or residential?
That's what I was gonna ask next. Is it appropriate for us to make a recommendation that, as you get time?
So I, I make a recommendation that staff checks into seeking out properties that are multi-zoned in the City of Independence to try to straighten them and clean them up per, I guess, city ordinances that are out there right now? Does that sound, sound correct?
If we say recommend to the city to reach out to owners who are in two or more zones, is that, consider rezoning for their benefit?
Generally, we, what we have done on the city initiative rezonings is all staff-driven.
Okay.
Uh, we notify the owners of the property as required, but most of the time, they're, they don't care. So it's, you know, we've done, you know, twenty-five or thirty of these over the last ten, fifteen years and probably well over a thousand lots and a third of the way there. I mean, it's just that many. Not including all the ones on commercial areas. We've got at the meeting two weeks from now, or two meetings from now, we got a gas station that's been there since the fifties that's owned R12.
Oh, my gosh.
So there's, this, a lot of this stuff is out there.
So does the, the owner have to be present for us to do this or?
No. We did, I did an area called the South Avenue rezoning probably fifteen years ago. There was over seventy properties that we zoned from industrial to R12, and I don't think there was anybody in attendance from the applicant's side.
Wow.
Okay. So, do we still want to do that or?
I, I think we're aware of, of that.
Okay.
We've been trying to do that. I think of last year, we did a number of properties on the east, excuse me, west side of town by, uh, Blue Ridge Boulevard or Blue Ridge Cut Off. We zoned a whole street from C2 to R12, I think.
Okay.
So we, we do those from time to time as, as we're able to.
Okay, wow. Sounds like you're already on top of, so I don't think we need to make a recommendation.
Well, thank you for cleaning it up. For cleaning it up. Okay, we are ready.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, as requested and I think delayed a little bit, we've got some additional training for you this evening. And actually, the delay was, was beneficial in that, if, if you all recall, we actually did a training last October that was kind of what I would call like a one-on-one session, if you will, where we kind of just refreshed our memories as to, you know, what are the roles of the, of the planning commission? How does that work with city council? How does that work with zoning board of adjustment, those types of things? You know, where does our power come from? What's our, what's our role? What are we trying to do? And we were kind of prepared to, to do a refresher on that, but after further discussion with city staff, what we thought is it, it might make more sense to do kind of the two-on-one level class, if you will, uh, which is gonna dive into UDO Section fourteen dash seven hundred-ish. It's a couple of actually sections through that area which get into the, the application process and what it is that we as a commission, what staff looks at when an application comes in, what a commission should look at when they're making a recommendation, and then, you know, ultimately, as it gets passed along to the city council, what the city council is supposed to be considering as they go through. So, um, I will, so two words of warning, I guess. One is, I've never given this presentation before. We made it for you. It's actually based off of your code. I have no idea how long it goes. So, um, we'll try to keep moving through it. None, none of us want to be here all night. I haven't slept in my own bed in five, for five of the last six nights myself, so I'm looking forward to getting home. So, um, I came straight from the Missouri Municipal League's Annual Conference today. So, um, the, the other thing I will tell you is, this is gonna be a technical slideshow and, and as we were trying to get everything put together and like that, there aren't a lot of pictures in it, um, things like that, there's a lot of, just a lot of words. So, uh, we'll try to, you know, cut through it. If you do have questions, feel free to stop me and we can kind of go through some stuff on it. But again, even for me, it's the first time I'm giving it, so, uh, so bear with me a little bit as we go through that and kind of put everything together. So with that, I'll, we'll dive in. So, uh, you know, as I noted, we've previously done that one-on-one session. This time, you know, we're wanting to do this more specialized survey of, of your processes. And so, uh, as you see, kind of more to the, to the right side of your screen there, we're gonna be going through text amendments and rezoning. We'll talk about planned unit development, special use permits, site review, and, uh, you know, appeals permits and, and different things like that, and, and what goes into all of that and kind of, you know, what, you know, again, as an application comes through, what we're looking for from the staff side and what we're kind of presenting back through to you in a staff report so that you can make good decisions on that. Okay, so diving right in, so you can see there, we're gonna try to reference as we go through the various sections of the city code. If you're, uh, I don't know if, if you all keep a copy of that or if you've looked through it before, obviously, it's available. It's the, you, we call it the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO. It is available on the city's website. Actually, if you just go in and search for city code, there's a couple of different links you can click, and, and there's a special one just for the UDO on there to click on that. So, pre-application conferences, uh, these are covered at Section fourteen dash seven hundred dash zero-two. I can see the reference there. These conferences are required prior to submitting an application for rezonings, preliminary plats, special use permits, and site plan reviews. And, you know, the basic idea of it is, is we don't want an applicant to just kind of come in and either have to guess at it or kind of wing it when it comes to filing an application with the city. What they need to do is come in and meet with city staff so they can get a lay of the land, they can understand better, how does the process work, what information does the city need to make that process smoother when an applicant comes in. You know, in the end, you know, we are, you know, essentially a customer service business, if you will, as the city in providing the municipal services that we provide. And so, you know, one of the things we, we do want to do is make sure that we have a, a streamlined and efficient process that, that people can easily understand as they go through, and this is one way to, to go do that. So, um, the, so again, we're, we're, in, in this process, we're looking to inform the applicant of procedural requirements. We're doing an exchange of information regarding the applicant's proposed development and the regulations, restrictions, you know, this is places where hopefully we're catching things that, you know, will say like, well, that doesn't really work this way, or, you know, we've got this issue here. If you did it this way, it might be a little bit better. And the more of those that we do, the less, you know, time we're hopefully spending in an actual public hearing trying to sort that stuff out, we're trying to get that taken care of on the, on the front end. We'll advise the applicant of public sources of information that may aid their application process. We'll identify policies and regulations that create opportunities or pose restraints for that development. We'll review any of their proposed concept plans and provide them with opportunities to enrich the development plan, to mitigate any undesirable consequences that could come of it. We'll review compatibility with like adjacent land uses. You see that in, in the staff reports. We'll advise the applicant of any public sources that may aid the application and provide general assistance going through with respect to their application. So, from there, we dive into the requirements for applications themselves, and that's just in that next successive section, fourteen, uh, seven hundred dash three. And so there are laid out in writing, there are requirements for the applications that we go through, and, and, and all applicants must abide by those requirements that are, that are put in the, the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance. If an applicant submits information that is, that doesn't check all the boxes, then, then that is gonna be a non-compliant, uh, application. We'll try to turn that back to the, to the applicant to make sure that we have all the information again. So you guys should fairly be seeing, you know, even though development and land itself is kind of like a snowflake, each one's gonna be a little bit different, you should see a repetitive process from your standpoint as these come through on that. It is the responsibility, under the ordinance, it's the responsibility of the community development director to determine whether applications are complete. Obviously, that is delegated down to other staff members as, as we go through. So, one of the notes here is that Section fourteen dash seven hundred oh-three subsection six expresses that the community development director may require that applications or plans be revised before being placed on the agenda of the planning commission or the city council if, if the community development director determines that. And then there's a list of four different items here, um, that it, if it contains, if the application contains multiple minor inaccuracies or omissions that would hinder timely or competent evaluation, that would be a reason to, to require a revision. If the application or plan cannot be approved without a variance or some other change or modification, uh, that the decision-making body doesn't have the authority to make. Remember, again, you as a planning commission, you're a recommending body, city council is an approving body, but based on a set of ordinances that are already put in place. And we can't vary those, those requirements themselves. That is actually set forth from, in the statutes by a, a different body, the zoning board of, of adjustment that, that handles variances. Applications that contain, you know, I will stop for just a second. So a variance, when that goes forward to the, the zoning board of, of, of adjustment or, or, how do you guys call that? Do you call it the BZA? I haven't done any of these yet. BZA, Board of Zoning Adjustments? Okay. Everybody calls them a little, something a little bit different, but there's some combination of, of that. That body has the ability to bend the rules, okay? And, and it's very, you know, specific, there's a lot of case law in this issue that's out there on how they bend the rules. But really, if it's a, they're, they're supposed to be very sparingly given. We're not supposed to bend the rules. Why? Because we have separation of powers that we learned about in the last process, if you remember, in the last training. And if we need to change the rules, whose responsibility is that? Ultimately, the city council. And if we're changing zoning regulations, then we know from that last training that starts here with the planning commission for recommended of approval of a text amendment, typically, you know, the change of the regulations that ultimately is then adopted by the, the governing body. So you don't want to be in the business of, and you really don't even want So you don't want to be in the business of, and you really don't even want to be considering bending the rules for particular applications that come through. We have to follow the rules that have been set, or we need to change those rules, okay? If an application contains the aforementioned types of inaccuracies that would substantially fail to comply with the development ordinance standards, then we would require an applicant to make a revision before they would go. There's no sense in bringing them forward to fail. And we want to, you know, make sure that when applicants are being, are they're coming forward to you, that they're, you know, they have a, you know, at least an even chance of being approved and that they could legally be approved. And as a final note, when the community development director makes a decision under this section that is appealable, and that would then go to your Board of Appeals process. Questions about that? A little further into the applications, just keep in mind that there are specific general requirements for rezoning, special use permits, site development plans, and preliminary Platts. And then there are requirements for plans that accompany all of these, and these are provided, again, with the cross-references to the fourteen dash seven hundred sections there, oh four and oh six. Technical studies, I know we've had some questions on some of the applications that have come forward about what technical studies are and aren't, you know, required and things like that, and that this is where that requirement is found at seven hundred dash zero, seven hundred dash zero six. Public notices, these are covered in your ordinance at fourteen seven hundred dash zero eight A, and it talks about the various types of notices that are required. So you have certain requirements for publication notice, mailed notice, and also posted notices that almost occur. So these are all things that your city staff is taking care of before an item comes to you, before, you know, you have that public hearing. These are things that are happening behind the scenes. We will note that from a legal standpoint, there is such a thing as the concept of constructive notice. So in the circumstance where potentially either a published or mailed notice may fail, if an applicant actually shows up at the hearing, they can't then later, not an applicant, but let's say somebody who was objecting to it or somebody who wanted to speak, they can't later say, "Your notice was bad because they actually were here." So they had to have some sort of constructive notice. So, you know, we run into that sometimes when there are, especially when there are mailed notices that are required to be certified. A lot of times, people will just flat refuse to pick up their certified mail, and it gets returned, and then they say, "Well, I didn't have that," so.
Do you think in the future, they might be doing like email notices? Or is that something that anybody's looked at?
Yeah, it's an interesting question, and it's a great question. I mean, and you have to understand, like, our firm, we represent sixty-seven cities in Missouri that do, you know, each one of, almost all of them have a planning commission and have the same kind of problem. And many, many of those smaller cities have lost their local newspapers, you know, not a situation that you guys are in. Unfortunately, and currently, the law, if you will, the statutes are not keeping up with the times when it comes to that. You know, the other thing I will just say is that the Missouri Press Association has a pretty strong lobby at the State House, and so they do get some protections for the newspapers. And so there are still some pretty, you know, strong laws about how published notices go. There's actually sections that deal with, you know, like certain kinds of papers, like you can't, you know, like, here's an example. I'm the city attorney for the city of Lake Winnebago, Missouri, on the south side of Lee's Summit down there, and they're basically an HOA. And they have, for their community, they have the HOA's monthly newsletter that goes out that is golden for them, like it is the source of information. It does not qualify as a publication newspaper, so despite the fact that that would probably be the best way to get this type of information out to the citizens of Lake Winnebago, it doesn't qualify. So you have to, you know, there are certain requirements that we do have to follow, and that's the stuff that we kind of take care of on the front end before you guys see it.
So that would be a state or would that be city?
It's a state statute.
Okay, so the state statute has to change, state before the city can change something?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, even with the city of Independence being a charter city, as a charter city, the city of Independence has a lot more power than cities that are what we call statutory cities, like the third and fourth-class cities that are out there. However, there are still many things that if there are already state statutes on the topic, that you can't usurp that, can't change the law for yourself there. One of the things I will note, because this comes up sometimes, is the mailed notices. When mailed notices go out, the, it says it's the applicant's responsibility to do that. I assume that we still do that at the staff level, or does the applicant send those?
Both.
Both? Okay, so we do both to make sure it's covered. They have to go out at least fifteen days prior to the hearing, and they go to the last known record owners of the property, so we don't have to, it doesn't have to be the actual owners, you know, can have a different name, you know, you get that mail that says, "Or resident," something like that. But it goes out to the last known record owners of property within one hundred and eighty-five feet, okay? And so that comes up a lot, and what you'll find is that in the statutes, that one hundred and eighty-five feet matters because we'll talk in a few minutes about what can happen when there's a rezoning protest. I don't know if you guys have had those before, it's, they're pretty rare, knocking on wood, but they can happen, and owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of various rezonings do have the ability to file written protests, which we'll cover in a minute, and that's why those notices have to go out, to at least owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet. Now, there are some cities that actually expand that way out. I don't recommend it, but, you know, it's certainly something they can do. You guys are right at the one eighty-five on everything, right? So I have some that are like three hundred feet, and it's kind of like, whoo. So it's a lot more costly in those cities to send out the notices too, so. Okay. Public hearings, those are covered at fourteen seven hundred dash zero nine. Where public hearings are required by the UDO, certain provisions do apply. So we have to provide the applicant and all other interested parties a reasonable and fair opportunity to be heard, to present relevant evidence on the application, and to rebut evidence presented by others. I've been, you know, handling these cases for you guys, you guys do a fantastic job with that as you go through. Rules of procedure may be adopted by the hearing body. I don't recall whether we actually have adopted specific rules of procedure. Do you guys know? We have Robert's Rules or?
Well, the commission has bylaws.
Their own bylaws, okay.
And Robert's Rules is part of that.
Robert's Rules, okay. So that's a very common parliamentary procedure tool. Obviously, you don't have to do Robert's Rules, you have other ones, but whatever you've adopted, you do have to follow from that standpoint.
What if the Robert's Rules liked?
I like Robert's Rules, I like pretty much anything less than Robert's Rules, quite frankly, because that's like this thick, and for, you know, a smaller body, it just doesn't make as much sense as it does for like Parliament or something like that, so. Continuances are permitted on public hearings, but only in certain circumstances. We, at the city of Independence, we allow one continuance upon the applicant's request at least three days in advance of the hearing. So it's kind of like you're, you get your one free pass. I think we've used that recently on an application or two that I recall. And you as a hearing body may grant a continuance on your own accord, and it does require a majority vote of those present to do those continuances. One of the good things about a continuance, or, you know, something to note about a continuance is that if you have properly noticed a hearing for a certain date and time, place, and you open that public hearing and you continue it, then you do not have to renotice that. We kind of ran into that a couple of weeks ago when we had, we didn't have a quorum, because at that point, we couldn't actually open and continue, so that required us to do, you know, renotice. So to the extent possible, you know, if we can get everybody here at least a quorum to open a meeting and continue it then to a date certain, then it's no longer required to do additional notices on that. So I think, you know, again, we recently ran into that, so. One thing, and I, this is, you know, maybe an issue that's timely, you know, at the moment, but the city council does no evidence, no new evidence hearings. So the city council will only hear evidence that was not presented at the planning commission's public hearing if that evidence wasn't available at the time of your hearing. So that helps to streamline the process as it gets down the road. You all are, by design, legally, you know, by statute, you all are designed to be kind of doing the heavy lifting, and so that is something that the city of Independence has even streamlined a little bit further with their, the way the city council holds their hearings after you've done yours. Okay. So this is a little bit of an overlap from the last training, but it's worth touching upon here, is, you know, the common issues that can come up with respect to public hearings. Thankfully, again, this is a recommending body, you're really more of an administrative-type body as opposed to like a quasi-judicial, like the Board of Zoning Adjustments would be. So ex parte communication can be a problem with some bodies, but it's less of a problem, what I will tell you, it's less of a problem for an administrative body like yourselves. But still, you know, what I always like to do is, I like to say, "We should really preserve the sanctity of the public hearing," right? So if everybody's hearing something a little bit differently and the entire public isn't hearing it, how you're basing your information, it makes it difficult to kind of understand, you know, you know, which direction and what basis of information you had in making a decision. So my recommendation is whether you can truly get in trouble for doing ex parte communication as an administrative body, what I would recommend is if you have applicants coming to you and asking you specifically questions, you would say, "Hey, I'm not comfortable talking about that, please bring these issues to the public hearing, or if you've got questions that need to be resolved, please take them to city staff, and they will distribute them to everyone, and that way you all have the same information, and the public all hears the same information as well when you're making your decisions on that." Prejudgment bias, again, not as big a problem with an administrative recommending body as it is for, say, example, you know, again, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, because they're quasi-judicial, it's really bad when they have ex parte communications and like they're truly kind of acting as a judge in their circumstances, so these are, you know, really no-no's for them. But again, here, it's okay as an administrative body to become familiar with the materials, you know, if you need to go out and drive by the site, or, you know, you have questions, you know, again, I would recommend if you have questions, take them to staff, let staff ask the applicant, and get an answer back to all of you, because you may have a question that, you know, that you would also have, but, you know, maybe didn't happen to think of it or whatever, and so it's a lot better process when you do that. And again, you know, make sure that you're approaching these meetings with an open mind, you know, listening to the evidence, listening to what was put in front of you, as opposed to using, you know, kind of outside sources to make your decisions. And then finally, conflict of interest, we kind of went over in several slides on that previously, is, you know, just be careful. I do commonly say that you will, you will have a conflict of, a perceived conflict of interest long before you have a legal one, you know, you'll fail in the court of public perception, long before you fail in the court of law when it comes to these. But you have to temper that somewhat, because they're, you know, in your roles, you do have a duty to vote. You're, you know, you are representing the citizens of Independence in what you do, and your information and your vote and your input is very important. So truly, you should only be abstaining on a vote if you have a true conflict, you know, a real legal conflict of interest. You're an owner in the company that would, you know, benefit from the application you're doing, or it's your actual application or something like that that you'd want to be careful with. You know, anytime that you think you have a conflict of interest, please raise that issue as early as possible. Get that information to staff so they can get it to us, and we can do a review of it and kind of talk with you about whether we think there's a true legal conflict or not, and we can explain kind of the edges of where that is, and, you know, you can then, you know, make a more informed decision about what to do on that. Okay, lots of words on this one, and actually, what you see here on the screen is, when you're taking actions either as the reviewing, recommending body like you are, or the decision-making body like the city council is, what you can see is, it's very similar, you know, kind of ultimately what you do, except for you guys are essentially just making those recommendations. So you do have authority as the planning commission to recommend approval, to recommend approval with modifications or conditions, or to recommend disapproval. So that comes up sometimes, and that's that second bullet point there on the left-hand side. You can recommend conditions and modifications if the effect of that is to allow a less intensive use or a zoning district that then is indicated in the application, okay? So you can't kind of condition, and I think it would be rare that you would ever do this, but you can't condition things to make it more intensive. Does that make sense? But you can do some things to kind of curb down what the request is and make a condition there to kind of make it less intensive, if that makes sense, okay? You cannot make a recommendation on a greater density. So again, if we were, let's say we're talking about a single-family home, obviously, you can't make a condition then that would say the, but, you know, you can turn it into duplexes too, or something like that. So kind of same thing I just said before, just at a little bit of a different angle, if that makes sense.
No, wait a minute, you just said density, is that what you said?
Density in that circumstance, yes.
So basically, we had that one come up where they had a hundred and five units? We couldn't recommend that they drop down to ninety units?
You can. Now, if I remember correctly, you may be talking about a planned unit development, though, which their planned unit developments, we're going to get into in a little bit here. Planned unit developments kind of, for lack of a better way of explaining it, they kind of set their own rules. There's, it, planned unit development applications kind of create a framework or set of parameters that you can then work within. You can't step outside of the parameters, but you have some ability to move within them, if that makes sense, and I think we'll cover that maybe a little bit better in a few minutes. But, so, you know, I don't know that that's a direct answer to the specific question you are asking, but you do, there's more flexibility.
Okay, because I mean, that application now, they've been probably sent back to us. I know you guys probably worked with them, Marty, on the Lee's Summit one.
Sorry. They haven't actually submitted anything yet.
Okay, because they postponed it indefinitely at the city council, so.
Yep, okay. And we should probably be careful about talking about any specific cases, especially, you know, anything that could, you know, be pending, you know, for some of the reasons that we've already talked about here too as well, so. You can see on the right hand, I'm not going to go through it all just because, you know, we do have quite a bit of material to cover tonight, but again, the city council has similar ability, but theirs is on the actual approval side as opposed to where yours is on the recommendation side. So let's talk a little bit about text amendments to the city code, to the UDO. This is at section fourteen dash seven oh one, oh one, so now we've kind of shifted out of the more general stuff into the more specific, you know, with respect to zoning So we do have, for text amendments, those are typically filed by the city council, the planning commission, or the public development director. So, you know, again, you know, kind of your more general request tonight that we would look at, you know, situations where there are split zonings on particular properties, or, you know, there is zero problem with the city taking a look at a particular area and saying, "This is an area that we want to see," you know, like, again, so remember, back to our last training, your, one of your major roles is in your name, right? The planning commission is you create the comprehensive plan for the city, and you set that kind of direction as to, you know, where, how the city and where the city will develop going years and decades into the future. And, you know, we see that in every application that we get, because we have to look back to the comprehensive plan to say, "Hey, are we following that direction that we most recently approved or not?" And so here, you know, you have the ability as the planning commission to say, you know, "Hey, we would like to see, you know, I don't know, pick some road, you know, we would like to see this area that is now, you know, maybe has been historically commercial, you know, maybe we've got a comprehensive plan right now that says we should take it residential, but we'd kind of look at that and we're like, "Does that really make sense?" And, you know, maybe, you know, we say, "Hey, this may be an area of the comprehensive plan that we would like to see, you know, either, you know, the comp plan be changed to make it go back to commercial, you know, right along, you know, what I would consider commercial strips," or you might have the reverse where you said, "We really wanted to see this go this direction, it's happening very slowly, so we can go ahead and initiate zoning from the city's perspective," and that's completely okay. You know, zoning has been around for a hundred years. It's been, you know, approved by the United States Supreme Court. We talked about this in the last training. Every year, every month, probably, I still have, you know, people that will come in and say, "You can't tell me how I can use my property." Actually, cities can, you know, and... Actually, cities can, you know, and it's, it's been, you know, again, the United States Supreme Court blessed for 100 years at this point that do that. And, you know, it's just more rare that a city actually does, you know, more of a, kind of a, their own initiated zoning. But it can happen. Keep in mind too, that when cities do that, if the property, let's say for example, you had an area that has been historically residential, it really probably would make sense for it to go commercial because it's on a commercial corridor or something like that. And you wanted to see that go commercial in the future. The city could step in and zone, you know, those residential properties commercial. And what would, you know, what would happen at that point is if the zoning did change, then a person who is using that property residentially doesn't have to stop. They then become what's called a legal non-conforming use, kind of a more, a less appropriate term. It's called grandfathering, but, but they're allowed to continue using that property subject to certain rules, like they won't any longer be able to expand the scope of it. There are certain rules that are in effect if, you know, like say a tornado or a fire occurred where there was a destruction of it and what you can do. But typically there are exceptions for, you know, actually owner-occupied residences that, you know, that were destroyed, you know, in act of God or something like that, that fixed that. But, so, you know, again, just kind of, I guess, more than underscoring the point that the city does have the ability to initiate and follow through on rezonings of property even when the applicant isn't interested in doing that.
So like on the flip side, if a residential area then gets switched to a C2, then if something happened, they could easily sell it much more easily than if they had to come back and get, do what everybody's doing.
There are certainly, you know, I, I think there's an argument for that, you know, is it, can we say a 100% yes, it will be easier for them to sell? You know, I don't know. But, I mean, in my mind at least, and I think there are, there's some evidence out there that would say that a, a property that can be used commercially is going to be more valuable than a property that is zoned for just residential use. Likewise, you know, typically a property that is zoned agriculturally is going to be more valuable as residentially, you know, and kind of, and what we talk about a lot of times is, you know, you maybe have heard me say this before, is like the intensity of the zoning, right? If you think of it on a scale, typically the least intense zoning you have is agricultural and the most intense zoning you have is, is industrial, okay? And so everything else is just some sort of a, you know, a, you know, a little cog, you know, in between the two, you know, a little, you know, stripe on the spectrum as you go. I have some cities that use, and I don't think we do this here, but I have some cities that have what we call cumulative zoning. And so what you'll see, we don't do that, right? We used to, thank God that's gone away. Yeah, so I'll tell you a little bit about cumulative zoning real quick. So cumulative zoning is where you have agricultural zoning that, you know, surprise, surprise, says, you know, you can do these agricultural uses on it, right? And then your next step up is typically like an R1, which is typically like a single-family residential, okay? What will happen sometimes is you'll read those zoning codes and it'll say R1. And the first thing it says is any uses available in A, which is ag, right? And then, and then it'll list all the uses for R1. And then let's say R2 is your duplex district, right? And it'll say, R2 will say, any uses that are allowed in R1. Well, R1 says like that. And I've got some that, what I will tell you is that if it's zoned industrially, you essentially don't have zoning in the city. Because if it's zoned industrially, you could go all the way down to grazing your cattle on it to, you know, tanning the hides on the same property. So, and I've, you know, tried to talk to some of those cities about getting rid of the cumulative zoning that takes them all the way back because what I will say is that zoning, you know, a lot of people will think of zoning of, well, you know, I have my nice house with my white picket fence and my flowers out front and I don't want, you know, the nasty chicken rendering plant to move in next to me and so that's why I bought residentially. But if you're the owner of a chicken rendering plant, you sure as heck don't want someone planting their flowers next door because even if you've been there for 50 years, those people will complain. You know, when they build their house next to you, they'll say, it stinks here and, you know, like whatever. You know, it's like people who move next to an airport and then complain about the noise of the planes. Like, I don't get it, but they do. Okay, text amendments, so, planning commission must hold a hearing on the proposed text amendments and then you make your approvals. That within 30 days of final action by the planning commission, the city council must set a time, place, time and place for their own hearing on that. And they may either adopt, modify, or reject the proposed ordinance or remand with instructions back to the planning commission for further considerations on some of those. So just a process there. Rezonings, so rezonings will say different from text amendments. So a text amendment would say, in a residential district, if we're going to start to allow beekeeping, we will add, you know, textually, we'll say R1, add paragraph 16 beekeeping, okay? Now, you know, that, that's what a text amendment is. Now, when you have, you know, what we even had in front of us this evening were actual rezonings where you take from R1 to an R2 or something like that, where you've actually changed what, what uses do apply to that piece of property. So this is covered at 14-701-02. These are typically filed by the subject landowner, but they can be filed by the community development director same way, you know, we talked about before with the city being able to do that. The contents of those zoning applications is covered in this section. A pre-application conference is required, we talked about those before. They have to show that vicinity map, a certified list of all the property owners within 185 feet, the zoning land use and ownership, or I'm sorry, the boundaries of the property to rezone and legal description. And then we have to do a notice of hearing for all those rezonings. So once, once the rezoning has been properly noticed, we have the public hearing and you have the community development director presents the application and the recommendation to the planning commission, right, delegated to our staff. And so the review and recommendation by the planning commission is held after your public hearing. You make your recommendation that we've talked about. And then ultimately those goes forward for review and final action by the city council. The review criteria is listed at subsection nine. And there's seven of those, I'm going to kind of quickly buzz through them. But what you should, what you will be seeing, what you do see on your staff reports for each type of application that comes through, you have the review criteria right in front of you. Those are the things that you should be considering when you make decisions, right? Be very careful to step outside of those because then that's a point where we start to, you know, have questionable authority on making a decision, right? So, you know, the rulebook has been laid out for applicants long before an application is filed, right? And that's why we as a deciding, recommending body at least, need to be following that rulebook as we go through. And that's why that stuff is put right in your staff reports, but. So we have to conform the application, the, for the requested zoning with the comprehensive plan. Do, you know, does this meet where this is supposed to be going? Does it, does it conform with the adopted neighborhood or sub-area plans that may be out there? Is, is the proposed zoning compatible with the zoning and use of nearby property, including overlay zoning? Is the compatibility of the proposed zoning and allowed uses within the character of the neighborhood? So you may, you know, sometimes sit here and wonder like, why are they walking us through? This is what it looks like up this street, this is what it looks like from that direction, like that. It's because, in case you didn't get a chance to go out there, you've got the ability to kind of sit there with, with your staff report, you know, what's in your packet and then what is presented here, you get that lay of the land. Does this meet with the character of, of the area out there? They have to, we can consider the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned, whether the property is suitable for the, for the uses to which are restricted under the zoning. And then also, we can, we can look at the extent to which approving the rezoning may or may not detrimentally affect nearby properties. So these are all things that you will see in that staff report as we go. If the city council were to deny an application that goes through, there are some limitations on reapplication. An application for the same or more intensive zoning on substantially the same property may not be accepted for up to 12 months after the date of rejection. So that is, you know, I don't know if that's something that you guys were aware of or had picked up on, but if something goes through ultimately is denied by the city council, there is a limitation on refiling. And I mentioned, I would talk about this before, but statutorily, in section 89.060 Missouri revised statutes, provides that if a written, signed, and acknowledged protest, and acknowledged means it was notarized, okay? Of a protest of a rezoning is filed by 30% or more of the owners within that 185-feet range. If that is filed with the city clerk, then it will require a two-thirds majority vote by the city council to still approve that zoning, okay? So it does create a higher standard. There isn't an effect here at the planning commission level, but it does create an effect later. And the protest petitions, they're covered at 14-700-13. And what they say is those must be filed with the city clerk at least 48 hours prior to the final decision by the city council. So there's a, they can do it kind of right up to the very end, but, you know, ultimately in that last two days, you know, we have to have known that it was in at that point. Let's talk a little bit about subdivisions. You see now that we've moved to section 14-702. The 17, let's see, so this, this section expresses the purpose of subdivision regulations. The requirements of these subdivision regulations are intended to protect the health, safety, and welfare of existing and future residents of the City of Independence to do several things. And this again marries up with some of that training that we received last October from the statutory piece. But when we are doing subdivision regulations, what our goal is, is we're looking to lessen congestion in the streets and public ways, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, or other dangers, to promote health and general welfare, to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, and to facilitate adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other requirements, okay? So that language comes from your U D O with respect to subdivisions. But I will tell you that it also comes straight from the statute in chapter 89 where those subdivision requirements land. And that's where you start to see is that subdivision, if nothing else, keep in mind that that subdivision, those subdivision regulations are designed to make sure that development keeps pace with the city's ability to provide services, okay? We talk a lot about leapfrog development when we typically talk about this. And what, what ends up happening is sometimes you'll have a property owner who is ready to develop and they're excited about developing and, you know, that's something they want to do. They have this idea, they have this concept or whatever. But the problem with it is, is it may be too far outside of where the city can reach with sewer. It puts additional strain on fire, on, on police for public safety calls to get to that area before, you know, we get to some others. That leapfrog development also causes kind of undeveloped pockets to occur where we can have blighted conditions and things like that. And so subdivision requirements, you know, you, if an applicant comes forward and says, I want to do a subdivision, like there's, I mean, you have every right to say, no, it's not the right time because that's what subdivision regulations are actually all about, is to make sure that the timing is proper. And certainly, when subdivision regulations come through and if they're going to be approved and they do create, you know, like they're leapfrogging, then the developer should be responsible for, you know, paying for sewer connections that go out that far or, you know, things like that. Also very cautious and tell cities, you know, do not provide services to folks who are not in the city, you know. It's a little bit beyond what you guys do, but, you know, I always, you know, tell my cities that if you've got, you know, a subdivision that's cropping up just on the outside of the boundaries and they want to be served with sewer or something like that, tell them no unless they annex into the city. But then you have to kind of do, have to kind of look at, you know, does that make sense from a provision of services standpoint, things like that. But these are all things that do kind of come into your bailiwick as subdivision regulations come through you first.
Okay, so we did have one subdivision. I asked a question about the utilities being upgraded for that area. How do we know that, and it was said that they were paying for it? I don't know how do we know that that happens? Or is it in the report, does the staff make sure of that?
One of the things with subdivision regulations is that happens at such an early phase, like typically, you know, the various type, and I don't remember exactly which type, were you talking about like buried conduits or?
No, this is going to be for down there in Little Blue Parkway. Because I asked about the upgrade to the utilities and stuff. So the power and all that stuff's not there. And they said they were going to pay for it. Because I asked the question if they were going to pay for it. Staff said they were, I mean, they said they were, but how do we know that's happening? That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, ultimately, if, if a developer, you know, gets approval of a subdivision in order to have the final plat approval, you know, there will be a, 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 a point where various utilities are, you know, potentially turned over to the city. So we have IPL, so we may be providing the power in that circumstance. We're not going to accept final approval of that subdivision until that stuff is done. And IPL is not paying for that, right? That is going to have to be the developer and.
That's what I wanted to know, on the final plats, we never see the final plats, correct?
I mean, you, you have final plat approval, but the, here's the thing about final plats is they, final plats are not, you don't have discretion on the approval of a final plat, okay? So essentially, the, the most important application that you're going to get through from the subdivision process is the preliminary plat, okay? Because at preliminary plat stage, that is when you are setting the rules essentially for the developer. So, you know, at that circumstance, now, I will say that by practice, it is morphed a little bit from what the statutes say. Because what the statutes would say is you do the, you do the preliminary plat and then the builder goes out and builds it all. And then you come back and you approve the final plat, okay? In practice, nobody does that, it's way too risky for the developer and I don't blame them. That's a whole lot of infrastructure with not a promise. So how it really works in the real world is you hit the preliminary plat stage and that's the point where you create the checklist to say, these are all of the things you need to do, developer. And then they go out with their engineers and their, you know, whomever, and they have that designed to that. And then we approve that preliminary plat. And then what we're checking against is to say, does, you know, do the plans match up with the checklist that we created at the preliminary plat level? And if it does, then we let them go forward with the final plat. And then there's one last hook that we have, right? And that is acceptance of dedication of public infrastructure. So we're not going to accept maintenance of a street that doesn't, you know, allow for a fire truck to turn around in it or, you know, you know, sewers, you know, storm sewers that don't flow properly or sanitary sewers that don't flow properly, things like that, and so.
That falls back on the staff to do all that?
It, you know, essentially it does and it's not even this staff so much. Sometimes it'll be the public work staff, it'll be, you know, other, other staff members that are responsible for making sure that those hookups can be made and that all that stuff is being done properly. And that's where, you know, the, plain, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, yeah, so when we get to, when they actually do the construction, we do require before anything's accepted, that's where all the bonds come in, that's where all the final plans that are what we call as-built, so we get everything that's in place. All the inspections will have been done at that point from all the utilities. So that's the point where we will actually accept the infrastructure.
Okay, so that, that's the final, and that's on the final plat plans that you guys see?
Well, yeah, so like when they get, when they do the preliminary plat stage and then they submit all their engineering and assuming all that engineering is approved, and of course here, we'll do the final plat approval. But then when they start the, we have a construction permit, so they pay a fee and then they'll start doing the infrastructure improvements. That's when we do the actual inspections. And so we won't accept the infrastructure until it's completed.
Well, I'm just worried about like the street, make sure they're wide enough for the apartment places that we were talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, that's when we, that's when we make sure that it's built per the plans. Now, there can be adjustments made, obviously, it happens a lot, especially with sewers and storm, when they start digging things up, there's adjustments that may need to be made. So during the process, there's probably engineering plans that are updated based on real world, real world conditions. It's very common that we'll find things that are in conflict, so. But yes, we won't accept it until it's completed. So the developer or the developer's construction company, they're still, you know, responsible for that infrastructure up until the city accepts it. And then at that point is when they can start pulling building permits for, you know, in a subdivision. And then at that point is when, um, they can start pulling building permits for, you know, in a subdivision, for example. Then they can start pulling building permits for houses, um, or they get an occupancy permit if it's some other type of multifamily housing or something.
And that's the hammer that we have, is we don't allow them to pull those building permits, or start issuing building permits, or, you know, later occupancy permits if these things aren't being taken care of, and that's how we do that. And it's painting a little bit with a broad brush, but developers develop, right? They're not in the business of being property managers, prop, you know, like, that's not what they do. They want to be able to turn that infrastructure over and move on to the next project. And if they're not meeting the city's requirements, and the city says, no, sorry, that's on you, you're gonna be plowing these, you're gonna be salting these streets, you're gonna, because we're not gonna take them, they're essentially somebody's very long driveway. Developers, you know, they pay attention to that, and they will, they will follow along. Most of the time, there are some folks out there that sometimes don't, but, um, you know, I would say it's, it's definitely more the exception than the, than the rule that, that we ever have to deal with on that, so. Let's see. I think I'm gonna move on to the next one, just so we can keep us, because we're like almost, we're an hour into this at this point. So, um, so, uh, we'll talk about, uh, preliminary plats are covered at fourteen, uh, seven-oh-two. We kind of had already kind of done an introduction in, into that. Um, these, uh, these are applicable to all non-exempt subdivisions consisting of four or more lots. Uh, so anything that's gonna be, uh, less than four lots would be more of an administrative lot split. Is that what you, we call them here? You, what is it? Minor subdivisions, yeah, I knew you were saying it tonight, I heard you say it a couple of times. So, um, minor subdivision, um, is, is gonna be more of an administrative process as, as opposed to being more, uh, uh, a legislative one. So again, these preliminary plats require pre-application conference. Um, uh, uh, the application, um, um, process, and say, the actual preliminary plat requirements are very detailed. They're, they're covered at section fourteen-seven-oh-two, uh, dash-oh-two-D. They have to have a title sheet, a sketch plan sheet, a preliminary plan sheet, existing conditions sheet, stormwater management plan sheet, natural resource protection plan sheet, and a phasing plan sheet. So those, I mean, so you can hear all of the different elements that, that we're requiring at the preliminary, preliminary plat process. And again, it's, it, it's because that's when we have our, our opportunity to have discretion, okay? We're creating that checklist for development going forward. What we're not allowed to do, and why I say we don't have discretion ultimately on final plat is once they're vested, once they've already invested a lot of money either into the design or even, you know, some, sometimes some, some preliminary work, um, we can't be changing the rules on them, uh, from that standpoint. And the law actually protects the developers from that standpoint. And that's why, you know, again, the discretion's at the preliminary plat, those are the most important approvals. Those final plats are typically just, did they check the boxes and can we move on? Okay? And, and I guess, you know, what I would just tack on to that is, you know, and likewise, if you're sitting here and you're going through a preliminary plat and you've got questions, ask those questions then. Because really, you know, the questions that you start throwing up at the, at the final plat process, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be too late, uh, at that point. Like, that had to be raised at the preliminary plat. So make sure, in particular, when you're looking at preliminary plats, that's when you throw your scrutiny in there. And really, you know, again, when that final plat comes through, it's just a matter of, did they do what we asked them to do? Um, a lot of details, again, I'm, I'm not gonna go through specifically everything on here. We have the, um, that, I will make sure that you guys can get the full slides if you want them. I know I just gave you like the three-page notes that are kind of hard to read in a really small print. Um, so there are actually eleven approval criteria that are, that are tied to the, um, to the preliminary plats. I did want to note, um, that, uh, an approval of a preliminary, preliminary plat is effective for two years after the date of that approval, okay? So they, there is a clock that's ticking for the developers. Um, you know, we, you guys may have had experience with this, you know, back in two thousand nine, when we kind of had an economic downturn. Um, there were a lot of developments that ultimately were abandoned, you know? I've had one in one city that sat dormant for eighteen years, and the developer then came back here just in the last couple of years and wanted to pick up right where he left off, and, and was like, was actually angry with us because some of the, like, stormwater regulations had changed. In the meantime, we're like, dude, you were gone for almost two decades, like, seriously? Like, the world did not stop while you were on the sidelines, you know? Sorry that you developed the first ten houses this way, but the next ten are gonna have to be, you know, under the new rules. And so, oh, he was upset about that, so, anyway, it happens. Um, good things to kind of keep in mind there. Um, here we go, minor subdivisions. Uh, so if we have a division of land into, uh, uh, into no more than three lots, uh, those, those adjustments in the boundaries, uh, can occur. Uh, the, these happen more at a, uh, administrative level. Let's see here, so I'm not gonna cover all the detail on that one. I do want to go to the, uh, the application piece. Um, so the applications for minor subdivisions can be submitted by the subdivider or a surveyor. Um, um, again, if we're kind of looking to clean up any lot lines out there. Uh, the, uh, they must adhere to the final plat content requirements, so there is a cross-reference there. And there is some supplementary information, the affidavit, uh, of minimum, minimum improvements, and, and sometimes engineering plans may be required, uh, for, for those. The, um, all lots that are platted under a minor subdivision do need to, uh, meet the zoning requirements for lot sizes. So keep in mind that, um, you know, like, we may have minimum lot sizes in certain, you know, like residential or whatever, that, you know, we gotta make sure that when we're, when they're doing the administrative, these minor subdivisions, that we're not dividing down too small, uh, on those, or making them too large in case there's a, there's a maximum, uh, on that.
And staff has probably catch that before we didn't see it.
Yes, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, we're, we're, we're looking for when we go through these applications, so. Uh, a minor subdivision may not include a new street to be dedicated, uh, to the city, uh, but they may include the dedication of additional right-of-way on an existing street. Um, and they may, uh, require the dedication of utility easements, you know? Again, and it may, um, it may be just, you know, because if you're dividing, let's say you have a, a ten-acre lot that you're gonna divide into, uh, three-acre parcels, you know, now, you know, like, you may have had one access before where you, now you need three, and you may need to run, you know, uh, an easement along the, the driveway that goes back that would, you know, be something to put the electrical, the cable, you know, things like that in. And so that's where you may, you know, have some additional inclusions for, uh, infrastructure in that circumstance. Uh, language needs to be added to every plat in which an easement is dedicated stating that the grantor, um, uh, grants, uh, they waive their interest, uh, in any right of, uh, to the rest, request of restoration of, I'm sorry. Let me start over. Language must be added to every plat in which an easement is dedicated stating that the grantor, on behalf of himself, his heirs, his assigns and successors, waives to the fullest extent allowed by law, including without limitation, uh, any right to request restoration of rights previously transferred and a vacation of the easement herein granted. So that's magic words, right? That basically would say that when we're allowing these minor subdivisions, we do have to put those easements in there so that someone down the road can't say, I didn't know about it. And essentially, the reason for that is we're gonna record that, and it's gonna be a recorded interest on there to show that those easements exist, you know? We're fighting in another city right now where, uh, some folks didn't properly do the paperwork on their easement, yet they still had it recorded, and there's a whole fight about, you know, whether that was proper notice or not. And it's probably leaning towards the fact that even if they didn't do the first part right, because they got it recorded, there's kind of that constructive notice that we talked about, and, and, uh, you know, fighting through the issues on that. And of course, it's right in the middle of a giant MoDOT project that we're doing, and, you know, they're threatening to shut the whole thing down, because that's what we do, so. Good times. Final plats, uh, we talked about those. Those are covered at fourteen-seven-oh-two-dash-four. Uh, these are submitted by the developer after the approval of the preliminary plat. We kind of talked about, uh, that before. Uh, the contents are, are coveted in that seven, seven-oh-two-dash-four. Um, and any supplemental application requirements. So something to keep in mind here, a special note with respect to, uh, uh, final plats is when, uh, final plat applications have been submitted, there is actually a sixty-day clock that's ticking on us to make a decision. So essentially, the planning commission is required to consider and make a recommendation to the council on a final plat within, uh, sixty days of submittal. And if, if our, this commission fails to do so, it is deemed approved and will, uh, will, will pass through.
But we don't see final plats.
Oh, yeah, they're probably consent, because you don't have discretion, but I, there, I think there's, you know, the reason for this is that some, because of the fact that you don't have discretion to change them, then some people will foil them by not approving them at all. And the law has been changed to say, you can't do that either, and it just pushes it through. Okay, as promised, planned unit development. So you see this moves into yet another section. It's fourteen-seven-oh-three that we're getting into at this point. Um, and so, um, for, uh, planned unit development, um, uh, the content requirements on these are very detailed and explicitly spelled out, uh, at seven-oh-three-oh-five-B. Um, some of the required materials include maps, uh, statements from the landowner describing why the development is in the public interest and various supporting documents. There is, uh, specific review criteria with respect to that, you know? And always, you know, we see our mantra of, it needs to be consistent with the com- comprehensive plan. It needs to be consistent with the P U D standards of section, uh, fourteen-nine-oh-two, including the statement of purpose. Um, we need to talk about the nature and extent of the open space in, in the P U D. Um, the reliability of the proposals for maintenance and conservation of open space, the adequacy and inadequacy of the amount of, uh, function of common open space are all things that are, are supposed to be required, uh, in those, and, um, the extent to which, uh, the proposed use will adversely affect the, uh, uh, safety. Um, uh, whether there will be a substantial adverse effect on adjacent properties, uh, whether, um, the, the P U D represents a u-, uh, a, such a unique, uh, development proposal that it could not have been accomplished through the use of non-con-, uh, of non-P U D conventional zoning standards. That one's important. It's kind of like, why do we do P U Ds? Because what the developer wanted to do doesn't exactly fit in the other, you know, already kind of preformed, uh, zoning requirements. And so that's where we get kind of that, that ability to, we, we build within a framework or parameters as opposed to specifically into, this is what you can do in an R-three or a, you know, a, you know, a C-four or whatever that may be. Uh, the approval of preliminary development plans are valid for twenty-four months after the council approves them, unless the council grants an extension. Uh, and P U D overlay zoning remains in, in effect until rezoned. I think just this evening, didn't we do, uh, we were recommending to do away with a P U D on one of those, those, uh, properties, had a P U Z, P U D zoning on it, and with the, the, the recommendation tonight, that'll go forward to the council to actually erase that, uh, P U D in that circumstance. Uh, changes that can be made to preliminary development plans, um, uh, after approval, proposed major changes require the submittal of a new, uh, preliminary development plan and subject to the same approval procedures as the initial plans. But minor changes to a plan may be approved by the community development director. And what constitutes major versus minor is actually covered in your, uh, U D O as well. Okay, so, uh, digging into, uh, that a little bit further, um, a major change is one that increases the proposed gross residential density by more than ten percent. So kind of back to your question, you know, from that standpoint, uh, does it involve a reduction in the area set aside for common open space in general or recreational open space or natural open space in particular, uh, or the substantial relocation of, of those areas? So obviously, open space is, is, uh, important to our P U D process. If it increases by more than ten percent, the total floor area proposed for non-residential uses, that is a, a major change. Um, um, if it, uh, increases by more than ten percent, the total ground area covered by buildings, uh, changes residential use or building type, uh, increases the height of buildings, the maximum height by more than five feet, um, that, that's gonna be a major change. If it decreases the s-, uh, setback by any, by more than ten percent, decreases, uh, areas devoted to open space of more than ten percent, um, or if it changes existing or proposed pedestrian walkways that will negatively affect pedestrian traffic or modification or removal of conditions to the preliminary, uh, uh, plan approval, or changes in the ownership patterns or stages of construct, constructions that have a, uh, substantial impact on traffic circulation. Uh, those are all things that would constitute a major change with respect to, uh, a P U D. Minor changes, the ones that are, uh, that are changes that would be administratively approved, uh, are those that, um, that are increases in density that, uh, that uses up to and including, the density of uses up to and including ten percent. So remember, the major change was more than ten percent. So anything, you know, pretty much on the flip side of everything that we just kind of talked about, if there are smaller changes than that, then that's something that can actually be approved, um, uh, through the, um, um, administrative process by the community development director. Special use permits, uh, those are covered at fourteen-dash-seven-oh-four. Uh, also require a pre-application conference, uh, all the, uh, information, uh, with respect to the various applications, the notice and so forth. So, uh, in addition to permitted uses available in each district, there are certain special uses. Special uses are types of developments, uh, or uses that can be used, that can, that are viewed to be supportive of existing land uses in certain districts. Special use permits are designed to give flexibility to the community and property owners to allow for other compatible uses within a particular zoning district. Special uses may or may not be appropriate in a given district depending on the nature of the specific use, its compatibility with surrounding uses, and mitigating sites', uh, specific conditions or requirements. Such uses require individual location, design, configuration, density, and intensity in order to determine whether or not a special use should be allowed. Uh, in addition, the imposition of additional conditions may be required to ensure the appropriateness and compatibility of use at a particular location. So, um, obviously, again, you know, special use, it's kind of right in the name. This is, you know, goes beyond just, you know, what you would normally see, you know? Again, if you're thinking of, of the typical uses, like, say, in an R-one, which, you know, I know, uh, R-six is actually your single family, but, you know, that obviously, you know, a, a, you know, one, you know, family unit, dwelling unit, you know, is typically gonna, you know, allow, you know, for a driveway, maybe an attached or a detached garage. It may allow, you know, certain yard setbacks and things like that. So special uses would go beyond that, you know? Remember back in the, uh, like, the late seventies and the early eighties, we had these giant satellite dishes in everybody's yard, you remember those? So, you know, it might be something like that, you know? I'm sure, you know, it's, it's gotten better now, you know, the satellite dishes are like, more like about this big, I guess, but, um, anyway, that, that's the kind of thing that, that we're, we're talking about there. Uh, review criteria for special use permits, you know, uh, very much the, the same, uh, stuff that we always kind of talk about, health, safety, welfare. That's, you know, kind of where we're at. Again, that's the information that's gonna be set forth for you in your, uh, staff report as these come through. Um, there is a limit on re-applications for special use permits. So if one is denied, you cannot have a, a new application for the same or substantially same, uh, amendment of that application for one year after denial. Um, if you get a, uh, special use permit, uh, failure to obtain a building permit or a business license that would utilize that use, uh, uh, must happen within twelve months. Or, um, that, uh, special use permit will, you know, lapse on its own terms. That can be extended by six months by the community development director. Site plan review, fourteen-seven-oh-five. Uh, site plan review is a, is a procedure that allows for the administrative review of detailed site plans to determine whether such plans comply with the city's regulations and policies. Uh, the purpose of requiring a site plan review and approval is to ensure compliance with the standards of the unified development ordinance prior to the commencement of development, uh, activity, and to encourage the compatible arrangements of buildings, off-street parking, uh, lighting, uh, landscaping, pedestrian walkways and sidewalks, ingress and egress, drainage from the site in a manner that will promote safety and convenience for the public, and will preserve property values of surrounding properties. Site planning obviously is a important process, because it lets you really kind of work through kind of the thought patterns, that do the math ahead of time before people are actually, you know, doing a full, uh, design. In order to be approved, a site plan must comply with all of the following criteria. It must comply with all the standards of the city code, uh, the development ordinance, and other city policies. The proposed use must be allowed in the district in which it is located. it is located, or be an allowed non-conforming use; um, vehicle ingress and egress to and from the site and circulation within the site must provide for safe, efficient, and convenient movement of traffic, not only within the site, but on adjacent roadways as well; and the site plan must, uh, provide for the safe movement of pedestrians on the subject site. Site plans can, site plan approvals can expire if no building permit is applied for within twelve months, uh, after that, uh, approval, uh, process. Appeals of administrative decisions, so again, administrative decisions kind of, you know, in the most part are going to be something that is actually done by city staff, community development director usually, you know, is the, kind of where the buck stops on that one. But, um, the, uh, the effect of, of filing an appeal, filing of a complete application for an appeal stays all proceedings and furtherance of the action appealed unless the official whose decision is being appealed certifies to the board of adjustment, um, that after the appeal is filed, that because of the fact stated in the cer-, in the certification, a stay would cause immediate peril to life or property. So again, you know, if you've got, uh, an official coming out and saying, you know, you've gotta, y- y- you know, stop, you know, work on this thing because you're, you know, not, you know, not able to meet the, you know, maybe the requirements of the preliminary plat or something like that, you know, just, you know, trying to come up with something here, uh, as an example, um, you know, some of these appeals can, you know, actually stay the proceedings, you know, with respect to whatever enforcement is going on, uh, in that circumstance. The right to appeal, um, is specified in the, uh, development ordinance, uh, and those go to the board of, uh, board of adjustment, uh, to hear, uh, those appeals, and that, you know, again, is kind of set up by statute, also set up by your, um, um, your own zoning code. Appeals have to be filed within ten working days of the, uh, decision that was, that, you know, they were harmed by, um, and, um, if, uh, once that goes in front of the board of adjustment, the burden of persuasion, uh, of the air is on the, the person who is making the, the appeal. So if they're saying that they were aggrieved by a decision, then they've got to prove that they were, it's not, you know, there's, the city's responsibility to say that they weren't, uh, from that standpoint, just, uh, at least, uh, only in a rebuttal. Board of adjustment in that circumstance may reverse or affirm wholly and, or impart the, the decisions that are being made, and they can, uh, remand to the administrative refi-, official if there's, uh, additional evidence that's, that's needed to be considered. Um, with, um, these appeals, again, this is not you guys, it's the board of adjustment, but they have to, um, anytime they're going to reverse a decision of the administrative staff, it actually requires four votes, uh, from them, um, which, um, they're a seven-member body, and so, um, let me think about that for a second, they're, no, no, they're a five-member body, they're a five-member body, so a quorum of a five-member body is three. But in order to overturn, you know, to either grant a variance or to overturn a decision, you have to have four affirmative votes, and I've actually run into this circumstance. Were you still at Grain Valley when this happened, or I can't remember? Okay, so, one time we were in Grain Valley, and, uh, you know, I know, I worked with Rick there, uh, as well, we had a meeting one night where, in that circumstance, it was a variance, which we know requires four affirmative votes. The board meets, they can open the meeting, they can, you know, they can work because they're a quorum, but I had to, you know, really quickly, when we realized that the fourth person didn't show up that night, I had to go grab the applicant and say, hey, I need you guys to understand that they cannot, even if they all voted yes, three to zero tonight, your thing fails, so I'm going to tell you, I mean, I'm not your lawyer, but I'm going to tell you that if you want an opportunity to proceed on this, you should go in there right now and ask for a continuance and ask them to continue it, which they could do because they had a quorum, they just couldn't approve the, uh, the, the actual application that evening. So, you know, kind of an interesting twist that, you know, luckily, we don't get into here, but it does happen at the board of adjustment, uh, sometimes, and in those administrative decisions, uh, that can, that can happen. Various types of permits are available, uh, special event permits, um, uh, there are guidelines on file in the city clerk's office, and they're incorporated into our U D C. Sign permits, um, section fourteen dash five oh four, uh, puts our sign regulations, uh, into place. Um, this is an area of the law, I will tell you, that is changing fairly rapidly, is as fast as sometimes the law does move, I mean, it doesn't move super fast, but, um, you may be aware of the, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona case that came out in twenty fifteen, I think it was, it was a case where, uh, a church was going out, and for their Sunday services, they were putting those little feather signs everywhere around town saying, hey, come to our church, and it was one of those, that was in kind of like a temporary, like maybe in a, you know, like a, sometimes it's at a rec center or something like that, you know, where they can go, you know, or maybe a school, uh, and they would put the signs up, and the city had certain regulations about that, and what the United States Supreme Court said in that circumstance was that, um, the Town of Gilbert's, uh, sign code was unconstitutional, it violated free speech rights because it, it was, it was regulating based on the content of the speech. What they essentially were saying is that because you had to read the sign to apply the city zoning code, then it was content-based, and therefore, it failed, uh, um, consti-, you know, it violated their free speech, and so, uh, it caused a big quandary for, you know, city lawyers everywhere at that point, because it's kind of like, how do you write, you know, and so we ultimately, you know, where you used to read a sign code that would say, you know, you know, for sale signs, you know, are regulated this way, and election signs are regulated that way, now we have to write these vague, you know, statutes that say, every year, we have sign season, and sign season runs, you know, sixty days before the second Tuesday in August, s-, you know, sixty day, or thirty days before the second Tuesday in November, and the second Tuesday, or the first Tuesday in April, and, and, and we had sign season, and what it really says is, you can post an additional sign in your yard during that time. Could be whatever, eat at Joe's, I don't know, you know, but, you know, but what people were typically, you know, are going to be using it for is to put political signs up. And so, this, this year, uh, actually, the court did kind of back off of that a little bit, so they, you know, they've kind of moved away from it a little bit, but we do have to be careful with respect to all of our sign regulations to make sure that they're passing constitutional muster, um, uh, with respect to that, and so, there is a process, uh, for us there. Building permits, chapter four of the city code, uh, prohibits the commencement of construction, reconstruction, and structural conversion, alteration, uh, raising, moving any building or structure until a building permit is granted, and it kind of gets back to some of the, what you were asking is, how do we make sure that some of the things that we're approving as a planning commissioner, ultimately, that are, we're recommending for approval, and then the city council ultimately does approve, how do we make sure that that stuff is being done, and we can control a lot of that, then, with the final administrative things, like where we're doing either building permits or occupational permits, uh, for, uh, the final product, if you will, of the developments that you often see. Uh, that last one we'll talk about is just the C of O, uh, certificates of occupancy is that final step, you know, and it's, it's, you know, gets right down to the, the final details on individual buildings with respect to that, so, again, not much for you guys to do, so I'm going to cover it pretty quickly. And there are certain written interpretations that are covered by your code, uh, the community development director is authorized to make written interpretations of the U D O, and there can be requests for that, so, you know, applicant may have some confusion about how a provision might apply from the U D O, and they would, you know, submit that to the, uh, community development director, and they have, uh, ten days to review that, provide that, um, pretty much, we're, I think, you know, when those come in, we get the call on that, and, and help the community development director, uh, with respect to that. Um, we provide a notice of decision, you know, again, if that decision, if the ultimate, the person who requested it then feels aggrieved of that, then they would go back through that appeals process that we talked about earlier, um, that goes through the, the board of adjustment, and if we do a official interpretation of zoning code, we're supposed to keep that on record, so, those are some things that are out there, so. Couple of my borrowed slides, I did want to just do a, a quick refresher on a couple of items, uh, one of the things I wanted to talk about is, uh, social media considerations. Please keep in mind that your membership, uh, on a, a volunteer board such as this, where you've been, uh, uh, approved, may affect your use of social media, you have to be very careful about how you do that. If, um, be careful about using your personal social media to discuss business of the board that you're on, okay? Uh, because, uh, what can happen with respect to that is, you can actually very kind of quickly find yourself slipping into a situation where you could be violating someone else's free speech rights. Normally, what we would say is, a private party can't violate someone else's free speech rights, right? You don't hear about, you know, for the most part, you know, Ford or, or, uh, G E or IBM being sued for a constitutional provision because they're a private company. Who gets sued for constitutional violations? The government, right? That's, you know, that's, you know, what that, you know, the government cannot abridge your right to s-, to speech, you know, uh, uh, establishment of religion, you know, those types of things. But when you use your personal social media account in certain ways, it actually can create what's called a public forum, and if you're using it in a way that looks like official business of the city, you can make your own personal account private, or, uh, public, okay? What's the best example of this? You may have followed it on the news up until roughly about, uh, twenty twenty, was, uh, Donald Trump, uh, prior to becoming president, he was a, you know, um, very active, you know, in TV and, and things like that, he was very active on Twitter, he, you know, regularly used that as, as a, as a method to, you know, kind of put messages out and so forth. When he became president, he continued to use that personal Twitter account, but what he started using it for in that circumstance was to lay out, you know, these are some things that, you know, I'm doing with respect to my office, these are, you know, you know, things that I'm pushing forward and so forth, and what would happen is that occasionally, someone would get on there and they would disagree with President, then, you know, President Trump, and he blocked them for that, and the, you know, someone sued over that, and the First Circuit, I think Second Circuit, the Federal Court of Appeals found that President Trump had changed his personal Twitter account to, you know, his private Twitter account to a public one because of the way he was using it, and as a result, he was, you know, essentially a government actor, and then by blocking certain speech, you know, on content, we talked about Reed, the content of their speech, he was blocking people that disagreed with him, but not people who agreed with him, that he violated those people's, uh, free speech rights. Um, that was on its way to the United States Supreme Court, but, um, what happened after, you know, uh, January of twenty twenty, uh, if you remember, Twitter did what? They banned President Trump from using it, and Supreme Court, I'm a little curious about how they came to this because I, you know, but they said that because his account didn't exist anymore, the case was moot. And I was like, oh, really? Well, you know, the, the action already happened, like, you know, it wasn't going to happen again, but, so anyway, uh, we don't have, you know, like, it's the cliffhanger, but we never get the answer on that one as to how that went. There are cases spread now across all of the, uh, the circuit courts that deal with the situation where private individuals get into a public office, use their account in a public way, talking about their public business, and they have been found to have created a public account, and then if they go and ban, you know, like block somebody or something like that, then they have been found to violate someone's civil rights, they're sued in a nineteen eighty-three suit, and if you lose that, you pay the other person's, uh, uh, attorney's fees, and, you know, whatever damages that they, they, uh, had coming to them, it's, it's a mess, and you find yourself in the federal court system, um, which is, I mean, not a good time. So, I always just say, just be very careful, uh, when you're using social media, honestly, if, if, you know, if, if you feel the need to be talking about planning commission stuff, and there are folks out there that really do get that excited about it, where they're out there, you know, like, I'm the planning commissioner for such and such, and here's what we're doing, create a separate account for that, talk with the city, talk with, you know, you, you probably have a P I O, there's probably a whole policy for that that I'm not aware of, um, but it probably exists on how to do that, um, but be cautious, do not use your own personal accounts for that kind of stuff, so, off that soapbox. Sunshine law, remember, you are a public governmental body, okay? Um, you know, sometimes people think it's just the city, or it's just the city council, but really, even if the, the mayor were to convene, you know, a special advisory committee of five people to go figure out which, you know, who had the best roast coffee or whatever in the city, that commission itself would be a public governmental body, subject to the sunshine law. But when we say, subject to the sunshine law, what we're talking about is, if a quorum or more of you are together to discuss business, you had to provide notice, you have to give the public the ability to, to speak, um, uh, so forth. So there are a lot of requirements with respect to that, and you have to be extremely careful. The other thing that I have seen, uh, on occasion, kind of relates back a little bit to the social media, certainly the electronic thing is, is, I have actually, I'm aware of cases, and I've actually seen sometimes where I'll be watching a body, and I can tell that they're sitting there, and they're texting each other. Don't do that, okay? Do not do that, because what you're actually doing, especially if there's a quorum of you communicating at that point in time, you're technically and legally, you're holding two meetings at the same time, you're holding one that's a physical, open, public meeting that everybody can see, but you're also holding an electronic meeting, and they are treated the same under the sunshine law. Electronic meetings require notice more than twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting, uh, uh, when the city hall is open, they require the ability to allow the public to observe, okay? There is no requirement at all under the sunshine law for the public to speak at a meeting, with what exception? If by law, you're required to hold a public hearing. So if you have public hearings, you must allow people to speak, but beyond that, public meetings are only for observation, not for participation, uh, with respect to that, so kind of keep those things in mind. But remember, as a body, you know, the other thing you have to be very careful of is what's called a serial meeting, okay? And for those of you who have taken my training, you've heard me say this maybe before, is, do not be the bee that pollinates the flowers, right? So, you can't sit there and say, well, I've spoken with, you know, this member and that member over here, and here's what they said, because once you start to line up, you know, in your circumstance, once you have four or more of you, you're conducting business, and there are cases out there, actually, the, the big case that, that's on this issue is, involves the Kansas City Public School District, um, where members, you know, were communicating serially, they weren't all together in one room, but they were sharing information that was, that was being, you know, uh, passed down, so, it is okay for you to talk to individual members to see how they feel about something ahead of time, just do not, if you've spoken with, you know, someone else, do not repeat what they said, okay? Be very careful about that. Out of an abundance of caution, I would just recommend, just have your communications here when it's noticed up and so forth, but, you know, from time to time, you may have a question about something, and I, you have to be careful that you don't ultimately create a serial meeting, okay? And keep in mind, uh, you know, you'll sometimes see a nasty gram from me that comes out, you know, if something goes out, I think that email is the most fantastic, you know, and efficient way to be a one-way communication, to get information out that is, I, you know, identical to all the members of the body. Do not ever reply to all, because once it becomes a two-way conversation, we've now have an electronic meeting that was not noticed, and the public, you know, technically doesn't have the ability to observe it, okay? They can probably see it later, but in the moment, you can't observe it, okay? So be very cautious about, never reply to all, but I, you know, I will always say, I will always protect and, and encourage, you know, one-way communication to get the same information out to everybody all at once for consistency's sake. Yes?
So, when Miranda sends out an email, now, people, uh, just applying copy and paste, you cannot respond.
That's true. Yeah, I, uh, I go back and forth on that one, on my feelings on that, because I, I like it from the standpoint that it does not allow everybody to reply to all, I'm a little concerned about it because it doesn't, y- you can't tell then that it actually went to a quorum. I think that, I mean, what I can tell you is that if somebody made a sunshine law request for that information, we would produce it, because there's nothing that would protect it, uh, from, you know, like, not when I say protect it, there's nothing that would allow you to close that record, but it's a little harder to tell that it was a record that went to a quorum of the public governmental body and whether it was, you know, so, I don't know, I'm back and forth on it, I wish there was a way to kind of lock down, you could still see that everybody sent it, but not allow a reply to all, but they haven't created that yet, um, I guess.
They've made a public, uh, reply.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll, you'll see from me, like, if I ever send one to you all, I usually put right in the subject matter in all caps, do not reply to all, just to make it very clear that, you know, like, d- okay, if I'm going to go click reply on this, that make sure that it's only back to, to the one person, so. Okay, um, that's that. How do we do? That was an hour and a half. All right, and I really flew through it, as you know, but.
That was very helpful.
Good. Good.
It's a lot to remember.
Any other types of trainings or anything like that that you all would want, you know, just let us know, we can, you know, pull some stuff together, that was kind of a very broad swipe, but if there's anything that you feel like you need to drill down in, and we need to maybe spend, maybe a shorter time, but a more intense time, we can certainly do that, but hopefully, between the training we did last October and this one, we've got a a pretty good feel for, you know, where everything comes from, and staff, you know, we're here to help guide that, you know, and put that into the staff reports to help the reminder as we go.
Go to the roundtable.
Yep.
Anybody?
Well, this is going to be my last one, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I've had quite a summer of family, personal, all kinds of things, so. I checked when my term was over today, and the, it kind of shocked me, so I was like, like, two and a half years from now, and I'm like, had it been like, you know, November, I'd have been like, yeah, okay, but I will say that, like, you know, I've I've thought about it, I will say, like, I think, being able to impact, like, small business owners has been the best part, and, you know, the things that we've raised awareness on, and the work that's been done to explain things to us, and has been really great, and I've had a good time on this, on this commission, and Bill Preston, if he's watching, is like, still, he's one of my favorite humans on the face of the planet, so I'll catch up with him when I can, but it's been super great. But yeah, just like the the time I've had, I've had a summer, so it's, you know, but I appreciate, I appreciate it from everybody, and it's been great, so, thank you to the city as well, so.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate all your comments and your astuteness and your questions, always. So thank you very much, and best wishes.
Yeah, thank you.
I would say, on staff's perspective, you probably got all your questions answered tonight on your last night. All those questions that you're always curious about, so, but anyhow, for staff's perspective, we really appreciate what you have done with this, your time here, your questions, your comments, your interactions with the applicants, and staff has been very honorable, and we really respect that and appreciate that. So you will indeed be missed, and Miranda asked me to make sure that you are aware that we will be having a plaque made for you.
Oh, wow.
And so we will get that to you as soon as possible, so.
I appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else? All right, with that, our meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.